Okay, Charlie, we're recording and we're live on YouTube, so ready when you are.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September the 16th meeting of the City of Charleston Planning Commission. My name is Charlie Carish. I'm the chairman of the commission. I'd like to introduce you to the members of the commission that are with us via Zoom. Mr. Jimmy Bailey, Ms. Erica Harrison, Ms. Donna Jacobs, Ms. Angie Johnson, Ms. Sunday Lepasus, Mr. Harry Lassane, and Mr. Sean Flue. A couple of things, the order that we work this meeting is I'll read the item into the agenda. And I'll read an item in for the record, and then we'll ask the applicant, we'll ask the City of Charleston staff to discuss item. We'll then ask the applicant if they would like to comment on the application. We'll then ask if anyone has any comments in favor of the application or not in favor of the application, then we'll, if they are not in favor, we'll ask the applicant if he'd like to respond. Then we'll close the public hearing aspect of the meeting, and the commission members will discuss, make a motion, and vote on the item. I'd like to ask Mr. Morgan if he would like to introduce anyone, or anyone who's going to participate from staff today, as well as let us know if there's any items on the agenda that have been, as the agenda's been changed at all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Christopher Morgan, planning manager here at the City of Charleston. And with us this evening, there are no deferrals for the meeting tonight. With us this evening in a staff role is on a heart from our zoning division. Also helping in a support role are Chloe Stubber and Philip Overcash, and I believe those are the folks that are involved. And of course, our clerk, as always, is Marcy Grant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. After, when we do the item, and then we discuss it, because we're meeting via Zoom and there's comments, Mr. Morgan will read any of the comments we've received. If anyone wanted to speak and signed up to speak, we'll hear that from them. And Mr. Morgan will read any items that we've received into the record as well. With that, I'm gonna proceed to the agenda. The first item is on rezonings is number one, 102 President Street, Cannonboro-Elliborough Peninsula, TMS 4601104023. Request rezoning from Old City Height District four to Old City Height District five. Mr. Morgan.
Okay, we have a little technical thing here. Just bear with me one minute. We had an old one in here.
Of course, how we doing?
All right, sorry, we had an earlier presentation in here that was not supposed to be there. So now we're on the right one. Okay. So this is, Mr. Chairman, I'll just go ahead and read the material from this. It's 102 President Street, TMS 4601104023. It's approximately 61.619 hundredths of an acre. It's a request for her rezoning from Old City Height District four, meaning four stories, to Old City Height District five, meaning five stories. And the property is at the corner of President and Cannon. We will show you some surrounding context, but just so everybody understands the general location, President Street running roughly north-south here, Cannon Street running roughly east-west. You all, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, had a rezoning to MU1 workforce housing across the street. That also involved a height change in that location. Now, we are looking at this property here for potential height change. The height change that is being requested matches the height across President Street of the parking deck that is at MUSC at the corner of President and Cannon. It's a five-story height district over there, and that is what is being requested on this particular lot. This is in our Century Five plan, of course. It shows as urban, which is the majority of the Cannonboro-Elliottboro neighborhood, which this is a part. So that is very much in keeping with Cannonboro-Elliottboro neighborhood. This is an aerial image of the current vacant lot that is there. It's a parking lot directly across the street. This, this hole in the ground is one of the shafts to our, our Spring Cannon drainage project that the city is working on to help with the drainage situation in this area. So that's going to be a vast improvement in the surrounding area. Immediately adjacent to the east is a four- and five-story condo development that is mostly rented as apartments to folks in the area. Then a medical office building a little bit further to the east on Cannon Street. And of course, the parking deck that is across President that I've already mentioned, we'll go and show you some other pictures here. Here is an image looking from the, looking towards the property from the south, and you see the adjoining, in this instance, it's five stories over here, actually, six stories, I believe, and then five stories in this portion. We do count the ground level parking as a story, so that would count as, I believe, I'm counting here, five stories, yes, and then four stories in the other part as well. The medical office building is in the four-story category, and then the parking deck is in this location. Next slide, we go to, again, you see the ground level and one, two, three, four stories, and ground level and one, two, three, four, five stories for this current building that's adjacent, and four stories for the medical office building in that location. Here again, you see the street-level view, subject properties in the front, right here. And looking, this is on President Street from across the street, looking at the adjoining development. And then here we are, looking to the southwest with the MUSC parking deck that's across the street. And again, the MUSC parking deck and the adjoining condominium development. And across the street to the northwest is smaller-scale development. Our staff recommendation is for approval on this, given the surrounding character of development. We feel that the request to go from four to five stories is appropriate, is also in line with the height district requirements, that if you are requesting a adjoining or a new height district, you cannot go more than a story above the existing height district.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Is Mr. Hellman or the applicant, they want to speak?
Yes, I'm moving them over to panelists now.
Okay, thank you.
I hope everyone can hear me now. Am I working?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, thank you very much for hearing this matter tonight. I'm Brian Hellman, Hellman Yates in Tisdale, and we're representing the applicant here, or the applicant here, for this zoning change. With me tonight, I have Greg, Greg Dillon with Dillon Partners, Tony Giuliani and Carol Wheeler with Gulf Antonio, and Preston Busby with Stephen Whiteside. And the project that we're working on here is actually a student housing-related project. And we hear a lot of student housing about the College of Charleston, but this is actually a medical university, a student, I'm sorry, housing project where we're, where we're seeking medical, dental, nursing students that are all at MUSC pharmacy students. And in designing the site, one of the things that we caught on to very quickly are the, the properties around us, particularly on the south side of Cannon Street. The garage next to us, all it shows is a five-story. It's really about a six-and-a-half-story building. It's, that parking garage, everybody's probably familiar with, because that's where MUSC has its helicopter pad. You'll see a number of how being there on and off throughout the day. So it, it reads as a, as a six-story building. Then we've got our site, and as, if you were to go back towards the Ashley River on Cannon Street, you'd see that next to where I used to go to the dentist's office long ago is currently an asphalt parking lot, but that's actually slated to be about a 100-foot-tall parking deck that'll be part of MUSC's renovation of the, of the property that's currently the wellness center. And then on the other side of Courtney Street from that is yet another parking garage. So we've got basically three parking garages in a row. You get to this site, zone currently for four stories, and then, as Mr. Morgan pointed out, we've got a four- and five-story building, and then the MUSC lab, which is an institutional building, and really reads as a five-story. So we, we met with the neighbors, the neighborhood, I'm sorry, association, and they were in favor of this. In fact, they said, hey, we really want you to do something great here, and we really like the fact that we'll have some, you know, hopefully some housing for the medical students. So that's really an overview of what we're after here. I'm happy to answer any questions, and if anybody's got anything to say, we, we certainly like to respond after that.
Thank you, Mr. Hellman. I don't, Chloe, I don't think anyone signed up to speak, I don't believe. Did they?
Correct. No one signed up to speak, but we do have written comments that Christopher made.
I was gonna ask Mr. Morgan to read the comments. I think they were, I think I read that there were several, some opposed and one in favor, I believe. So if Mr. Morgan would read those comments for the record, I appreciate it.
Sure. All right. So first off, from the Cannonboro-Elliottboro Neighborhood Association, Marion Hawkins president writes to you all, the planning commission, "After presentation at our meeting on Monday, September 14th, 2020, the Cannonboro-Elliottboro Neighborhood Association voted overwhelmingly to support the rezoning. We feel that the proposed building will be a good neighbor, good for the neighborhood. It will provide significant commercial space along with student housing. We're leaving the pressure of housing MUSC students within the limited housing stock. There are no historic buildings or other preservation concerns in the immediate vicinity of the site. We see no reason to allow, to not, to allow this structure to be built as five or six stories. We hope to see high-quality architecture that will redefine the character of this intersection, which is currently among the least appealing in the city. We encourage the planning commission to approve the request." And that's again from Marion Hawkins. Then we have several folks who have sent in written comments that are opposed. The first is Luke Fisher at 11 North Road in Salisbury, North Carolina. "I am a current property owner of the adjoining property known as 40B Street Flats. The 40B Street Flats is a residential community comprised of 40, 84 condominiums. I understand the current zoning of 102 President allows the construction of a four-story building directly in front of our existing building. Our building is a four-story structure. Our building is described in the petition as five stories, which is incorrect." Well, I'm gonna edit here and say, it does have a portion that is five stories, that the portion that comes towards B Street is five stories. "The construction of a neighborhood of a, the construction of a building one story taller than our current building, in my opinion, will have a negative effect on the living environment and life safety of our residents that they currently enjoy. I don't think it is fair, as appropriate, to approve rezoning that allows an increase in building height, which sets the course for all potential future development, without having additional information from the petitioner that addresses site layout and location size, scale, and mass of the proposed buildings. In 2015, a project was submitted on a specific site, and to my knowledge, was not approved because of these mitigating factors. The rezoning is granted unilaterally before consideration of these factors. I believe the potential for negative impact to the neighborhood is greatly increased. Thank you for your reasons outlined above. I strongly oppose this rezoning." Luke C. Fisher, the Fisher Companies. Second correspondence from Deanne Lucas at 201 Hadrell Street in Mount Pleasant, "An MUSC employee and owner of unit in 30B Street. Please do not allow this project to be a five-story structure. It will add mass that is already there from the MUSC President Street parking garage. The other buildings adjacent with the proposed project are 135 Cannon Street, MUSC, and 30B Street condominiums are both four-story buildings. A five-story building will overpower the small two-story wooden homes and businesses across the street on Cannon and President Streets." Third correspondence from Brent Lindley at 2690 Burton Creek Road. "Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I represent University Place Horizontal Property regime, which governs 40B Street Flats, located directly behind this property. We are multifamily building. The staff summary mentions, but there is an error in that summary. The staff states that the multifamily building behind the subject property is five stories. It is not. Again, correction, it is, because we count that parking level as a story. That particular building is four stories, as is the medical office behind us. Our five-story building does not neighbor this subject lot. It is the regime's opinion that constructing a building that is one story taller than its immediate neighbors is out of line with the neighborhood. We are in favor of proper development of the site. In the past, the city has recommended that the site be constructed in a way that is considerate of its neighbors, meaning conscientious of scale, density, and mass. We ask that the committee recognize the error in the staff summary and reevaluate the staff's recommendations based on this information and previous city recommendations. Thank you for your time." And the fourth correspondence from Aaron Paps at 146 Canyon Oaks Drive, "As an owner at 40B Street, which is a four-story building, we are not in agreement with the potential rezoning of this property, allowing a four- or five-story building. It would be detrimental to our property. Thank you." And then we also have one other from James Lindley at 2410 Oakwood Drive. "I'm a homeowner at 40B Street Flats, as well as the president of the homeowners' association or regime of the building. Speaking for the entire property, we're disappointed that the city staff's preliminary recommendations to approve a reasonable request for 102 President Street. The city summary mentions that the neighborhood consists of mostly two-and-a-half-story buildings, a few three- and four-story buildings, and MUSC structures. The smaller buildings are directly across the street from the site. Additionally, the city has mistakenly informed the commission that our multifamily property is a five-story building behind this lot. Our four-story building neighbors 102 President Street, which would be entirely overshadowed by the construction of a fire-story building. Other buildings neighboring us have four stories as well. Lowing such a rezoning request to progress would be to decide to alter the identity of the neighborhood in favor of mass development. This is the opposite of what the city requested of the extra same site in the past, when the 63-unit building with four stories needed to be scaled back. The TRC has been presented with a plan for a five-story building with 88 units. We urge the planning commission to resist overdevelopment by supporting the city's previous stances on what is best for the site." Those are the written comments.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Hellman, would you like to respond to any of the comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would. You know, as, as is evident by the, by the folks that are responding here, there are a number of rental units that are in this adjacent project, and it is four and five stories. I think if you, if you really look at, at what this is about, we've got a very large parking deck that's to, to our left, and this would basically balance the parking deck and the remainder of Cannon Street as you move east from President Street. And that's why the neighborhood, when they looked at the plans and when we discussed it with them, we had an overwhelming, I think, as, as the neighborhood president said in his letter, an overwhelming amount of support here to really fix this imbalance that exists at this corner. And as, as Mr. Morgan pointed out, the units to our, to our east are, are four and five stories, and we're likely to be there as well, in terms of how this ultimately gets developed. But as you then go to the other side, where the MUSC lab is, which is, which is two, three buildings from the corner of President Cannon, that's a 65-foot building. It's a four-story building, but because of the institutional nature of it, those, those floor heights are pretty tall. So it ends up being a pretty tall building in, in, as a four-story building, it really is about, about a five-plus, if it were residential. So we think this really balances out and does a good job of anchoring the corner, and that's where I think city staff is coming from in its approval, as well as the, as well as the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Hellman. That's gonna close the public aspect of this item. I'd ask any questions, motions, or comments from commission members. I, I would like to say, I remember that growing up in that area, that area's changed so much, and it's so active over there. Ms. Lepasus, I know remembers, I, I think about that area, and think about the Castle Peyton Hotel. Some of you too young to remember that. We used to go swimming there, and things like that. But anyway, any questions, comments, or emotions from commission members?
Joe Lassane, his hand raised.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Charlie, this is Harry. I would ask if Christopher could put up on the screen the view from President Street, looking across that parking lot toward the, the building from, from which the comments came.
He's doing that now.
Is that the view you're looking for?
That one right there.
Okay.
So, yeah, it looks to me like there is a, a level of parking, and then for, I'm looking at the building to the right. So there's a, a parking level and four stories on top of that, and then the, and then the building to the left is, is, is four stories. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. And, and if you will look back, it's important to see the site plan one more time. You will see that the, this is the five-story building here. So that bumps up against a portion of the site, and then this is the four-story building here. And of course, this is a four-story building on the other side.
And it appears to me that, one of the images you just showed, there were aerial views, that Mr. Hellman just pointed out, that MUSC building to the east is, is a good bit, these comments.
You're breaking up a little bit. Can you repeat that?
I, I just mentioned that the, the MUSC building to the east of the condominiums is taller than those buildings by a fair amount, that looks from this angle. So, given that, I, I will move for approval of the motion, and I would just say, you know, this, this particular corner of the city does not have the most distinguished architecture in our city, in my opinion. And I, and I would challenge, it's not the purview of this, of this commission, but I would challenge Mr. Hellman's clients that, you know, this is a real opportunity to bring some distinguished architecture to a part of the city that, that needs it badly. So I will move for approval.
Thank, thank you, Harry. Thanks, Mr. Lassane.
And I'll second Mr. Lassane, and I agree, and I agree 100% with what he's said. This area definitely needs improvement, and, and I hope you, Mr. Hellman, will, will make it look a lot nicer than the areas around.
Thank you, Ms. Lepasus. So we have a motion and a second, and you're right, there's an opportunity. Wait, I'm sorry.
Ms. Jacobs has her hand raised.
Ms. Jacobs, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I worked at MUSC and parked in that garage from the day it was built until the day I retired from the Medical University of South Carolina, and I agree with Harry and Sunday on this matter. I just want to ask, anything that's constructed there, would that go under BAR review? Just as a question?
O-B-A-R review, absolutely.
That's what I thought. So for the people that are concerned about mass and sizing, that's gonna get a very extensive review there. And, and Harry was right, there's not anything of prominent architecture on the, on any of those corners. They're just massive buildings that have supported the medical university. And what is sorely needed in that area is housing for students. There's a lot of pressure on the city for that, and they need to be somewhere where they can easily walk and not create transportation issues, because it's unaffordable to live on the peninsula. They move to other areas of the city, and then they create a congestion situation coming in. So, sounds like the project's right on target, and I'm in full support of it. I just wanted to add those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Any other comments from commission members? If not, we have a motion from Mr. Lassane, and a second from Ms. Lepasus. I'll call the roll for vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Lepasus?
Aye in favor.
Mr. Lassane?
Aye in favor.
Mr. Flue?
Aye in favor.
And I'm in favor as well, so that's, this passes by eight, eight to nothing. So thank you, and, thank you at all. So the second item on the agenda is ordinance amendments and rezoning. Number one, Harriet Street, Braswell Street, Milford Street, Oceanic Street, and Haygood Road, Magnolia PUD, Peninsula Neck, TMS 464000012, 025, 026, 028, 029, 030, 039, 040, 46413008, 011, 012, 013, 023, 460000016, 017, 018, 019, 028 through 037, 044, 046, 049, and 051. It's about 189.49 acres. Request rezon, request amendment to the Magnolia PUD, Unit Master Plan and Development Guidelines to Minut sections related to net density, permitted uses, and temporary parking standards, and rezone TMS 460000043, so as to be included in the planned unit development. Mr. Morgan, or who is gonna speak on this?
I'll handle this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, obviously, this is a very well-known plan development. It's been working at, at getting development underway, really from a planning standpoint and a site preparation standpoint, really for almost 15 years. Mid 2000s, they began with some zoning work on the site and some initial site work with contaminants and things like that, that, that needed to be cleaned up. And what, what you're being presented today kind of brings it full circle, in that the remaining industrial operation that was kind of in the middle of the remainder of the PUD is now coming into this PUD. That's the Parker Marine site that shows on this image as the deeper red site on the Ashley River right here. This had not been part of the PUD in the past. It had always been, kind of hoped that it would be, because it was on such an important piece of Ashley River frontage, but it, up till now, had not been part of the actual development. For those of you who may not be as familiar with the development, this is off of I-26, running roughly north-south in this location, and adjacent to King Street right here. This is north of Wagner Terrace. It is north of Harriet Street. Harriet Street intersects with I-26 down in this location and Rutledge Avenue. A new road was built for Magnolia with TIF funds that intersected Rutledge at Harriet and continued on and created a bridge over the marsh, infamously known for the past 10 years or so as the Bridge to Nowhere. And this bridge will provide access from the southern end to Magnolia. And of course, there will be accesses to King Street extension on the northern end. And, and now, very promisingly, the Low Country Rapid Transit, which will be our bus rapid transit system, will traverse King Street in front of the project and have a stop nearby, so that folks will be able to get to the most efficient type of rapid bus transit that there is in the region. So we'll kind of go through some of the slides here, and then we're gonna switch over to images from the PUD. Here, you see the aerial photo of the site. Again, properties that the city still functions from, for our public service yard, and of course, those will be relocated as these portions of Magnolia are developed. And then the existing Parker Marine, which is still functioning on the site, would be allowed to continue functioning on the site for a couple more years, as per the PUD amendments. We have some applicant slides here, too. I'm gonna switch over to the PUD slides, if you will, will bear with me just for a minute. If you will, bear with me just for a minute. I'm going to need to stop this here and get into the PUD documents. And let's see. Let me get to the PUD documents.
Can y'all hear anybody?
I can hear you.
Y'all hear anything?
I hear you.
Chris is still trying to work out the kinks in this thing. He's trying to get the slides up.
I was just checking, making sure I wasn't missing anything.
All right, can everybody hear me again? Here we go. So we've got the PUD side by side with the version from November 2014 to the one that is now here before you tonight. And it shows the red line and we'll just kind of traverse through this. And then we will also hear from the applicant. But let's see if okay, this is not, okay, I see what I need to do. Okay, the contents, we'll skip this. This is just kind of some of the relationship to the zoning ordinance language. And then we have the overall dimension info, the fact that it's 189-acre site and includes 48 acres of marsh on the Ashley River, 32 parcels. And it talks a little bit about the remediation that's occurred. Here's the list of all the parcels that are part of it, and there's some ownership changes on these. So and it has increased in acreage because of the addition of the Parker Marine into the PUD now. Here is the earlier version of the PUD. And now here is the current PUD with the Parker Marine site that is currently heavy industrial that would be added in. Then we've got the total project area of 189 acres, developed areas 140. Total open space is 72.42 or 38% of the total area. So a very generous amount of open space. And again, it was comparable in the earlier version of the PUD. The total counts are for residential 4,080 units. That's an increase from 3,500 units. It is a slight increase or increase in office space from 850,000 square feet to 1,050,000 square feet. The retail has dropped from 420,000 square feet to 200,000 square feet. And hospitality has increased to 1,040 accommodations units. Next slide, here are the basic development blocks in Magnolia. And now with the Parker Marine not being part of it, you see that this is a more fully set up development block in this location. This is just some of the basic development standards. Not much has changed here. A few additional changes here, such as the addition of casinos as an excluded use and then allowance for food trucks and temporary food services on some of the Harriet Street parcels and the fact that Parker Marine can continue on until 2023. Temporary parking standards, and this is about special events, which we were very comfortable with these kind of standards. Outdoor parks and park requirements, the total usable open space went up and it is 38%, 72.42 acres of that, 23.73 is usable. And then the park types. And then we have stormwater management. They have been working with our stormwater folks to make sure that the best stormwater concepts are used on the site. Traffic study has been updated and it does have improvements to several surrounding intersections. And these are listed here from Mount Pleasant Street and King Street to Harriet Street and King Street extension. A number of improvements would ultimately be a part of it. The letters of coordination have been updated, such as no longer SCNG, but it's now Dominion Energy. It's also part of the North Charleston Sewer District. The design review process has remained the same. Conceptual master plan, the we have some new street rights of way. And I think we have some images here now of the overall development site. And you see there's a little bit of change in the way the block layout has occurred and, of course, the addition of the Parker Marine site. But it still is following some of those basic principles we see in Charleston, such as streets that that have water vistas, creating a grid in this location, making sure that the waterfront is a public area, making sure that we have good connectivity to surrounding areas such as King Street and to the southern areas, to the Harriet Street area with the new bridge. The height districts in the area have changed slightly. The greater heights are through the center of the site. These are nine-story heights in red and nine-story here on some of the Parker Marine site. They are surrounded by the green five-story heights and then the yellow six-story heights. And then there's also a purple three-story height district. So that is how the layout goes. So the greater height is towards the middle. But it is not something that dominates the entire waterfront with tall height just at the very center there. And greater heights away from Rosemont and away from the historic cemetery to the south, more into the middle of the site. And street hierarchy, street widths. I'll let the applicant make any other comments on these. We'll kind of zip through these unless there are questions from the commissioners. Not huge amount of change in these. And then the open space diagram is here that shows the waterfront parks that would be a very significant addition to the city's park system. Of course, the the bridge that comes in, the Harriet Street Bridge that comes in, has already on it a bike and pedestrian lane that will connect to all this, and that carries all the way out to Rutledge Avenue. So you'll be able to very easily ride a bike from surrounding neighborhoods and traverse the waterfront park areas as well as the rest of the Magnolia development. And connectivity, as we've already discussed, and just some street perspectives, the type of development you'd see within the development. And waterfront park view down here, so very significant addition to Charleston's waterfront access by virtue of this development occurring. And traffic studying, we will skip through these. Letters of coordination have been updated. And that is what we have for the PUD present in this presentation. We can certainly go into more detail if you all would like that. I am going to back it up. And I think we will let the applicant now have a few things to say. But from a staff standpoint, we are endorsing this and recommending for its approval, these amendments to the PUD and then the change in the zoning of Parker Marine from heavy industrial to being part of the PUD as well.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Chloe, I know the who's going to speak for the application?
I'm going to speak. My name is Hillary Hillary Birch. I work with Perkins Eastman, based out of New York. But I've been working with Highland Properties to look at this site since they took ownership. We come with extensive amount of watershed waterfront experience. And I think that you see here is not a change as described in the plan, but just a couple of things that were done. One was a more focused look on the waterfront. Two was the add-in of the Parker Marina. And then three was just adjusting the the blocks and the the structure of the site a little bit in order to to align with some of the most recent thinking. I think that the city did a did an excellent job showing it, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, ma'am. Chloe, I don't think we had anyone sign up to speak and no written comments as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. In that regard, I'll close the public aspect and ask commission members if they have questions, comments or a motion.
Ms. Jacobs has her hand raised.
Ms. Jacobs, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I read this with great detail and I did have some questions. That staff was very gracious to help me through as a new planning commissioner. This has been seen, but I had some questions. And I really would like to compliment staff on how they showed the the before and the after of the PUD. It made it easier for me as a new commissioner to kind of go through where the changes were. I would like to add that I did ask the question about why affordable housing wasn't in there and got a really good answer that it is in the PUD and it's been assigned to a section. And there's a development agreement about that. So that was really happy to to hear about that initiative with the PUD. Once again, my only concern is still funny about the language about the public space because there's a language that says the parks that are improved with the TIF money from the city, you know, city parks, but then some are property owner parks. And I just want to make sure there's no language that finds us gated out of any of this waterfront access within this PUD. So I would like to move for approval with the condition that we make sure the language is such that the waterfront park is fully accessible to the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. And Christopher, the application, can they clarify, is that language clarified enough or Mr. Morgan?
It might be good to let the applicant give comment on the request.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Birch, would you like to speak?
Yeah, sure. I will say, I think that the whole principle of the plan is not only to make waterfront park public, but really to promote access to the waterfront. It's kind of the principle that it was bound on. I thought that there was language in here that we didn't change from before that specifically talked about kind of the public access to the waterfront. But but if it's not there, I mean, pending some of the ownership's consent, I think that makes perfect sense to me.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments, questions, and Ms. Jacobs made a motion as a second, or other comments or questions from commission members?
This is Jimmy. I'll I'll second Ms. Jacobs' motion. I have a unique perspective. I can look over my right shoulder out the window and see that Parker Marine site across the marsh, and I think it'll make the PUD better. So I second the motion with Ms. Jacobs' condition.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and you got a good view. I know that. You got a good view. Have any other questions or comments? If not, I'll go ahead and call the roll for a vote. Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Lepasus?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Lassane?
Aye in favor.
Mr. Flug?
Aye in favor.
And I'm in favor as well, so that is a vote of of eight in favor and none against. Thank you all. And, you know, last meeting and this meeting, we've seen some big tracts of lands for the city of Charleston. So it's an interesting time. We'll go on to to ordinance amendment. 546 Riverbend Trail, Highway 41, Wando Village, PUD, Kane Hoi, TMS number 263-0004001 and 057, approximately 66.50 acres. Request amendment to the Wando Village Plan Unit Development Master Plan and Development Guidelines to allow for sound barrier for a portion of the property adjacent to the newly widened Highway 40 roadway and new bridge. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm just getting us to caught back up in where we need to be. There we go. Okay. Can you all see that? It says applicant provided slides of Magnolia. Okay. Done that. There we go. Okay. You all see ordinance amendment one?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Great. Okay. So as the chairman said, 546 Riverbend Trail and Highway 41, this is Wando Village PUD. There is a minor amendment being requested here. This is an update of the PUD that was approved in 2015. It relates to the fact that there is now a large bridge for Highway 41 that used to be a level bridge that now is, I guess, about 60 feet of clearance above the water now, 60 or 70 feet. And so it comes down and kind of overlooks this property in a way that it had not done previously. And so the applicants would like to request a the ability to add a sound barrier for a portion of the property adjacent to this new bridge. And as it moves forward for development, they've realized that this would be a thing that would enhance the the site. Just kind of giving you a little bit of overview of the site. Again, it's long 41, where 41 branches off in Clements Ferry Road will ultimately be widened. There'll be a new intersection configuration here, and Clements Ferry Road will become a five-lane roadway. Of course, the county is working on widening of Highway 41 through the Mount Pleasant area in in some fashion. So this is kind of a gateway to the city from the the northeast, I guess you could say, as people from Mount Pleasant enter the city, moving into the Kane Hoi Peninsula. Here's an aerial image, and I believe this is with the new bridge here. Yeah, it looks like the road has been widened now here. And you see the undeveloped property here that is the Wando Village PUD. Little bit closer image here of the property and the change in the way the roadway looks from August 2011 to November 2015. And here you see the road image from June of 2019 coming into the property. And this is the overall PUD approval that shows where the different densities are on the site. And then what you see here is highlighted in with the little red squiggles around it. And this would be the subject area for the sound barrier. And here is a cross-section of how the sound barrier would be constructed in this location here. And there is also a language section that talks about it here. We have it in a little bit more detail. It's a 12-foot-high sound barrier. And the way the sound barrier would be constructed is it would be parallel to the buffer and the buffer against Highway 41 for a portion of the site south of the main entry to Highway 41. The barrier should be earth-toned colored concrete material, so very durable material texture or otherwise to blend with the buffer. The barrier shall be screened by the buffer in a maximum of 12 feet in height. So we have that info. So our recommendation is approval. We're very comfortable with the design that they've discussed and the type of materials and think they will be durable and recommend approval of this ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Chloe, is Mr. Riley going to speak on behalf of this application?
Yes, and he's been permitted to panel us if he should be able to unmute himself and share video.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I apologize, I don't have video. This is Brian Riley with Thomason Hutton Engineering, representing the property owner for this PUD amendment. We we agree, we support Christopher Morgan's stance and we greatly appreciate staff's time and help in in proceeding with this minor PUD amendment and appreciate your time. We can answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Chloe, I see no one signed up to speak and there's no written comments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll close the public aspect of this and ask for commission members if they have questions, comments or a motion.
Mr. Bailey has his
I'll be glad to make a motion. It sounds like this is just
Charlie, Mr. Bailey has his hand raised.
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Bailey, you go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a question of Christopher. I totally understand why they want to put the sound barrier in. And you just how it'd be constructed. And and I think he said screened by the buffer as well. My only concern would be is it is, well, first of all, I can't believe the city extends all the way up there these days. That's crazy to me. But my only concern is you did mention it as sort of a gateway to the city. And I think it might be a bit of a shame if if the first thing you saw is just a giant ugly wall. It will be screened with landscaping. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey, can you see the cross-section I put up on the screen here?
Mr. LaSane has his hand raised.
I, I had my hand raised for the purposes of seconding Mr. Bailey's motion.
Thank you, Mr. LaSane. So, I have a motion and a second. If there's no other comments, we'll, uh, do a roll call vote. Let me just find my sheet so I get it right. Uh, Mr. Bailey?
Aye in favor.
Uh, Ms. Harrison?
Aye in favor.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye in favor.
Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Aye in favor.
Uh, Ms. Lepasus?
Aye in favor.
Uh, Ms. Lepasus?
Aye in favor.
Uh, Ms. Lepasus?
Aye in favor.
Uh, Mr. LaSane?
Aye in favor.
And Mr. Flue?
Aye in favor.
And I'm in favor as well, so that's eight in favor and none opposed. I believe that finishes the agenda. Is that correct? I don't think there's anything else on there, sir. Um, I did want to say, um, so everyone knows, um, the minutes because, uh, I've had a couple of commission members ask me about when minutes were coming, uh, with us doing these virtual meetings, these Zoom meetings, there's a lot more information transcribed and has to be, uh, typed up. So, it's taking a little longer, but, uh, Marcia told me that she's working on it. Hopefully, we'll get something in next week to try to catch up on that. If there's no other, um, business for the commission members, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you all, everybody, for your work and, uh, you all have a good, uh, good week and good weekend coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Good night, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye.